We're going to call this Ready Regular City Council Meeting to Order. Today is Thursday, April 24th, 2024, and then it's 5:30 PM. At this time, Councilwoman Arona will do our invocation and Councilwoman Seals will do our pledge of allegiance.
I have a photograph that you can come before us and give us strength, patience, and understanding to work with the situation that we have here before us. And we may come to an outcome that serves every citizen in Pecos, each county. I know and understand that we cannot always please everybody, but we have to do what is right for the majority of this. That's what I say, my word. I get to ask you for your blessings, your guidance, your mercy, and forgiveness. This is my blessing and amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, we will show that Councilwoman Trujillo, Councilwoman Arona, and Councilwoman Seals are present. If you have your cell phone, please put it on silent at this time. And I will open the floor for public comments. This is a time for residents to share with the council any comments, concerns, and/or compliments that they may have. It is asked that each person limit their time for three minutes as we do have several scheduled agenda items to attend. And just for everybody's information, we cannot respond to any public comments. At this time, are there any public comments?
Okay. Mayor and Council, Edward DeLeón, Marketing Communications Coordinator. As I want to say, I'm excited to introduce our newest member of the team, Ms. Clarissa Millan. She'll be helping me and supporting the communications department as our new marketing communications specialist. She holds a degree in communications and political science from Angelo State University and brings with her valuable experience from her time as social media manager at the West of the Pecos Museum.
Hi, I just wanted to thank all for this opportunity and I'm very excited to...
Thank you.
We're glad you're here.
Mayor and Council, I'd like to invite our public out to our biannual community cleanup that's happening this Saturday from 8:00 AM to noon. We will be serving breakfast and lunch upon completion. We want people to come out and strive to get that award. It currently is in the hands of our ESD, I believe. And we invite everybody to come out and pick up as much as you can and support our Keep Pecos Beautiful. Thank you.
My name is Jeff Bartinas, Pecos resident and current city council candidate for Pecos, Texas. May I know when my time starts and may I have a 30-second warning, please? Thank you, Mayor. You are not my enemy, and I am not a criminal, but this administration has betrothed me to be both. I'm here to speak up. Protex's guidelines, I cannot single anybody out during this public comment, but I have by this administration. This administration wants to see no one new in office. This administration is teaming up and using their elected seats to influence voters. It was publicly announced on the radio by current city leadership telling voters how they should vote. There has to be some kind of ethical code against this. I was questioned on my ethics. The facilities I wrote about, the multimillion dollar ones I asked about on social media is from an excerpt with three passages issues from the voters were. I'm simply relaying a message, relaying a message in a passage. In further detail, I was recently tagged by a top-ranking official from the city of Pecos leadership from their personal Facebook page. Rather than reach out and ask me directly about the statement I had made, they did so in an unprofessional way. I'm disappointed in my city leadership. I'm still a citizen of Pecos. Money was also posted from the same Facebook page on the second day of early voting, right before the polls opened from the same ranking official within the city. Is that a coincidence? As for the posts I was tagging about my signs, I have worked hard, extremely hard, and always verify with others to make sure I'm following the rules. Yet city leadership singled me out as being a criminal publicly, and I believe for their own personal gain and interest. Let's get technical. I can't see half of anyone's disclosure statement off the side of the road. There's one in my front yard where I watered the grass. Can't even see it. Sorry. Why am I the only one facing this biased treatment publicly on a social media platform? This just proves everything I've been saying since I started. Not this election, but when I got involved with the city. I'm concerned about retaliation from this official and what the response will be. Also, this official has violated my right as a citizen to a fair election, and it already has made the damage. It can't be reversed. It's time to hold our leadership accountable, but with a one-sided council, nothing will be done. Tonight, I'm asking for a public apology during public comments, if you may. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
Mayor and Council, Charles Lino, I just also would like to take this opportunity to remind our council and mayor and the public that Senator Blanco is holding a resource fair here in our city that will be on Saturday, I think from 10:00 to 2:00. What they're doing is he's bringing it out here. We've requested from him to do it because most of the stuff that he does, he does in El Paso and in Fort Stockton. This will be the first time that he's really bringing something out. I will tell you that if you're expecting to see Senator Blanco, he will not be there. He's stuck in Austin with the legislature. He will have his staff, but they're bringing some resources. Like if you have any concerns, if you have anything that you really need help from the state with, they're there to try to give you some guidance. So I encourage anybody listening, anybody here, if there's anything that you've got frustrated with from the state standpoint, take that opportunity to go meet with some of his staff because I think it may be very helpful. Thank you.
Any other public comments? We will go to the consent agenda. Item F1, approve the minutes of the April 10th, 2025 regular city council meeting. Item E2, review the expenditure report. Item E3, review the fiscal year '24-'25 quarter two treasury report. Item E4, Town of Pecos City major funds March 2025 budgetary comparison financial report. Item E5, review of the Cyclone Ballpark's March 2025 report.
Just now, it says on the treasury report some of the interests being made.
Yes, ma'am. Especially still with test drive, yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for this review? I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion from Councilwoman Seals, a second from Councilwoman Arona, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. Item F1, presentation of Lord Lynn Foster's retirement service report. Strategic Goal 5, promote open and consistent communication. Will I live? Have a certificate for you? It's there. Good luck.
I thought we were going to have an opportunity to tell a story on you.
Oh.
I have one.
Go ahead.
Want me to share it? I think it was the second time you came to ask for something. First time you were very, very nervous, but the second time you were up there and all of a sudden I just seen you kind of go and found out later that you almost did pass it up there. So we're glad you didn't go all the way down, so.
I think we got that finally taken care of.
Okay.
Thank y'all. Thank you.
Item F2, proclamation for claiming May 1st, 2025 as National Day of Prayer. Strategic Goal 5, promote open and consistent communication. So whereas throughout the history of America, we have poured out our hearts to the God of hope in times of crisis and celebration, in prosperity and need, in times of war and peace, we have poured out praise to God for all of His, thanks to God for all of all He has done. Confession and pleas for forgiveness when we have parted from His word and will and poured out intersection, asking for His heart and hand to move for the sake of our neighbors and nation. And our history is filled with His grace, goodness, and abundant answers to those prayers. And whereas from the first prayer of our Continental Congress in 1774 to opening of every session of the House of Representatives and Senate and throughout hearts and homes across America, the practice of prayer continues to seek God for guidance, wisdom, power, protection, and provision that has perceived hope and united us in one nation under God. And whereas the National Day of Prayer is a public law established in the United States Congress in 1952, approved by a joint resolution and amended by Congress and President Reagan with public law 100-307 in 1988, affirming that it is essential for us as a nation to pray and direct the President of the United States to set aside and proclaim the first Thursday of May annually as a national day of prayer. And whereas in our city and across America, the observance of the National Day of Prayer will be held on Thursday, May 1st, 2025 with the theme "Pour out to God of hope and be filled." Based on the verse in Romans 15:13, that is a prayer and a promise, "Now may the God of hope fill you with all joy and peace in believing, so that you will abound in hope by the power of the Holy Spirit." And now therefore I, Teresa Winkles, Mayor of the City of Pecos, do hereby proclaim May 1st, 2025 as a national day of prayer. Throughout our city, and I commend this observance to our citizens and request that prayers be poured out for our city, for our neighbors as we live, serve, work, and learn together, that we may be filled with all joy and peace and abound in hope. Second proclamation. This is a proclamation for claiming April 18th, 2025 as Electrical Linemen Appreciation Day. This is Strategic Goal 5, promote open and consistent communication. Whereas the Town of Pecos City honors the profession of linemen as this profession is a selfless service steeped in personal, family, and professional tradition. And whereas electrical linemen are often first responders during storms and other catastrophic events, working to repair lines to make the scene safe for the citizens of the Town of Pecos City as well as other safety workers. And whereas electrical linemen work for the Town of Pecos City power lines 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, to keep the electricity flowing. And whereas due to the danger of their work with thousands of volts of electricity high atop power lines, these linemen put their lives at risk every day for the citizens of the Town of Pecos City with little recognition from the community regarding the danger of their work. And whereas the U.S. Senate in April of 2013 first recognized the efforts of electrical linemen in keeping the power on and protecting public safety and designated by resolution the annual celebration of the National Lineman Appreciation Day. Now therefore I, Teresa Winkles, Mayor of the Town of Pecos City, along with the members of the city council, do hereby proclaim April 18th, 2025 as Electrical Lineman Appreciation Day. And we call upon the citizens of the Town of Pecos City to recognize and appreciate the hard work, innovation, and dedication that these public servants make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life.
Yes, ma'am.
And we also have representatives for the National Day of Prayer.
Do you have one?
Yeah, I said picture. Yep. Yes, back here.
Should have had about maybe 10 people, but I guess we let them all do it because I could show them.
I can show them. One more, more starters.
I was going, I've been a lineman for over thirty years. I don't do that much anymore. I'm more inside, but uh. Paul Harvey wrote this in nineteen eighty-six. It's called The Lineman. What are their thoughts, these hardy souls tangled in knots on top of poles, sorting it out in a blend of blue, doing a job few would do? What are their thoughts, this gathered crew who risk their lives the long day through in summer heat or winter snow, taking orders from afar below? What are their thoughts, this man across who joke and swear or harm his son, who know their distance well to be a rubber glove from eternity? What are their thoughts at the close of day, as they scramble down and put hooks away? Do they thank God for their hearts beat with leaf to fill the earth beneath their feet? What are their thoughts as they head for home, longing once more to meet their own? Surely they must feel some delight, knowing they help turn darkness into light. It is a very rewarding career that I've had to take so much good. And gotta be a little bit crazy to work electricity. But I enjoyed it and it's a career that I would encourage anybody to go with. Very rewarding. I've been to three hurricanes, New Jersey, Florida twice. That's good work.
Okay, we will go on to item F four, discuss, consider entering into a production sharing agreement, PSA, with Civitas Permian Operating LLC as submitted by Bison Energy LLC for drilling wells on, under section fifteen and sixteen blocked by H and G Railroad Company Survey Reeves County, Texas. Continue it, goal six, sound government and physical management. Director Johnson.
So, we've been in communication with Civitas, they couldn't get a rep here for tonight. We've told them that we may ask this to be postponed and look to set up a meeting with them and the intern with myself, Charles Heather, so they can give us a little bit more of a rundown on what they're looking to do with this agreement before we bring it back. So, might ask that we postpone this to second meeting and may give us a chance to do that.
And make a motion to postpone.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilman Arona, a second from Councilwoman Torio, to postpone this to the second meeting, may?
Yeah, that should be a possibility.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. Let the record show that Councilman Graham is in attendance, he came in at five forty-nine. Item F five, presentation of the Pecos Area Chamber of Commerce, CBB, twenty twenty-five first quarter report, strategic goal five, promote open and consistent communication. John Carrick, CBB director.
Hello, counsel. Sorry for the late handout. You all received one. Worked diligently to try and get this to you before the meeting and thank you to the people at Trans Pecos Banks and CNA. They were able to help me. This report, you are some of the first to see it. Our board has not approved it. We, but I did not want to show up empty-handed at your request. So, all these transactions and everything that you're seeing, the balance sheet is still pending board approval. I know that we have a joint meeting coming up in the near future. I will answer any questions that you may have today, but most of your questions would probably be better answered at the, at the joint meeting. But I will do anything possible to answer your questions.
You know, should these all look pretty good? Are they gonna be sustainable for the rest of the year or how's it projected, projected out?
We're projecting to keep going. In fact, we had, I had two today, which is a good day at the chamber. We, we were striving to make that, I think everybody here knows, the chamber wants to stand on its own and be sustainable on its own with its memberships and events that we do and not have to rely on the city or the county to help us out. But we tried to build something that was sustainable. And so, instead of going back and asking eight different times for someone to donate money to a different cause or a different event, we tried to bundle it all together so that they can make one payment and essentially carry them throughout the year and be part of every event that we have. And so, those were changes that were made by the previous executive director and I think that that is working very well and my recommendation is, is we just keep going with it.
Payroll, sixty thousand for the first three months. Who, who have on? Is it your salary too?
Yes, sir. So, the salaries all came out of the general fund until today I was put on the signature card, so I was able to have access to the bank accounts. And I deposited the check from the city for the CBB portion. And so now, since I am the CBB manager, my salary and everything will come out of that account. And when we fill the chamber executive director's position, we will have that come out of the general account. And so, we're making every effort possible to keep everything separated so that you have a great idea of where your money is going at all times.
So, how many of you are on the signature card?
As of today, there are three. We are waiting for one more person that I was unable to get a hold of today. And once that person is on there, we will be, all four of us will be on there and they will be able to upload that. But until then, I cannot sign any checks or anything because that piece of paper has to be completely filled out so it can be uploaded. Until today, there was only one person that was still on that sheet and that was our president elect.
But you just got on it today.
Yes, ma'am, I got on there today.
They have to, they have to have a complete, all course signature, signature card for them to upload it.
Yes, ma'am.
We were previously told there were already four of you on it, so.
Yes, ma'am, I think that was misunderstanding and that could have been on my part. We had a meeting after the resignation of our previous executive director and at that time, we were talking about having the joint meeting a lot earlier. And it was my understanding that we were waiting for the joint meeting to see the way that you guys would suggest that we go. And so, instead of going and changing the names each time, we were waiting for, I don't want to say a blessing because that's not what I'm getting at, we're looking for just some guidance on, on how to do things. And with today's meeting and trying to get this stuff put together, we went back and looked at the minutes that were written up and the way that it was written up was, we could go and, and become part of the signature card. And so, there were two people added to it today.
So, y'all had a meeting today?
No, ma'am, we went back to the special meet, yes, ma'am, the minutes. I believe it was April seventh.
Well, three thousand a month for this? Accounting fees?
Mr. Graham, that's something that I can ask the, the board.
Charles, you know who's doing their accounting?
Pardon me, sir?
You know who's doing their accounting? They're charging three thousand a month.
CNA's doing their accounts.
Just for this? I think I've, I've seen another firm.
They do control all of our checks and all that kind of stuff, Mr. Graham.
They actually have your checks, right?
Yes, and they do our payroll, so.
Somebody, just get somebody, but you know, you need the statements.
Yes. I, I think there's a lot more to it. I think they got this together for me today so that I wouldn't come empty-handed. They were being very gracious and I'm, well, I'm gonna thank them a thousand times because I've had some people tell me that when I found out I was gonna be here Tuesday morning, that I had an impossible task and it would have been without them and Trans Pecos Banks. So, again, thank you to everybody there. And it's something that we can absolutely look at, but that is more of a board question and I can put it on our next agenda.
We have a meeting on Sunday night?
Yes, ma'am.
I think you're kind of in a position, because you haven't really been there that long for one thing and, and there's just been a lot of changes being made and you haven't had access to probably everything you should have. So, I appreciate your efforts to try, try to get something here for us tonight.
No, I, I appreciate that. Just, it will only get better, so. I, I'm sure you guys have a lot of questions and I would love to answer all of them.
Do you need a little more time to review this?
Yes, ma'am, I, I do too. But again, I just, you graciously asked many times and we failed to produce and I didn't want to come empty-handed, so.
Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Apology shouldn't be yours.
Oh, but I, I work for the organization, I will, I will always.
And appreciate it.
Take what's coming and, and, and give, and give feedback because that's, that's what, that's what I'm here to do, so. But thank you for your patience.
The, the joint meeting.
Awesome. Have a good night, thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to ask that F seven be moved up to four F six?
Okay. We will go to F seven, presentation of Pecos Housing Authority, twenty twenty-four annual report, strategic goal five, promote open and consistent communication. John Salsito, Pecos Housing Authority Director. We're gonna flip your items.
Pardon?
We're gonna flip your items.
That's what I was gonna ask, I thought the, the pilot was first.
We kinda wanted to hear the report.
Okay. Well, I, I sent it, I sent my report into, to our city manager maybe first of the month. I'm not sure if y'all had an opportunity to review it, if you had a chance to look at it or not, but I'd be, I'd like to entertain any kind of questions y'all might have.
So, you have a new member on your board?
Yes.
Representative.
Yes, we, we had Irene Dominguez, she served on our board, probably, she was there, one of the, she was one of the council directors that hired me, so she's been there over twelve years. And she's a resident director and since then, we've, she moved out of housing and we, we have a new resident manager, resident director, who is Armida Vasquez, she's Juan Vasquez's sister. You know Juan Vasquez, city, city police officer.
So, the rents have pretty much stayed the same?
Yes, ma'am, our, our rents, you know, they're, you know, the, the housing authority really has no control over the rents. They're, they're pretty much based on the, the rent, the fair market rents here in Reeves County. And then we're allowed to go down eighty percent from there. I could actually charge more, up to a hundred percent of the fair market value here in Reeves County. However, we go as far down as HUD allows us to, which is the eighty percent. And then after that, we subtract a utility allowance that HUD has allowed us to, to, to subtract as well. So, that's how we get our rents. That's where we, that's where we get our flat rents. And then anything else, for example, if, if you have a person that is making, let's say a thousand dollars a year on SSI and our rents for SSI could be five hundred dollars at a thousand dollars a month is coming in as income, then that's, that's where they would fit in that range, that, that five hundred dollars. But let's say they're making five hundred dollars of, of income, then their rent might be two fifty. So, it's just based on, on income that's coming into the utility. Yes, ma'am.
And I guess the reason I was asking is, from year to year, there hasn't been a whole lot of difference until year twenty twenty-four, like it was five thousand, then two thousand, one thousand, but in this past year, it was like forty-eight thousand on rental income, the increase.
Uh, I don't follow.
Well, in twenty twenty, it said, rental was five hundred and four, thousand, three hundred and fifty-two, and then the next year, it was five hundred and nine, and then the next year, five hundred and eleven.
Okay, I got you.
And then five hundred and twelve, and then this past year, it went up to five hundred and sixty-eight. So, it's kind of an increase, so that's why I was wondering if rentals had stayed the same or?
It, it's just like anywhere else in town, your rents have gone up, our, our rents as well here in Reeves County has gone up, so naturally, that's gonna follow the trend. We have no control over that. The only control that we have, again, is we go, instead of charging a hundred percent, we can go down as far as eighty percent. Yes, ma'am.
It's kind of a look at both, you look at your, your average income, you have to look at their income first, but then also you base it on eighty percent of the rental average income. So, it's kind of a.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
You know, you get subsidy, I guess, you may have mentioned this, but you get subsidy to help.
The, the operating subsidy that we get is based on how our financials, our management, our physical inspections fall within our, our, our housing authority. And we, don't you get, you're asking, tell me your question again?
Well, yeah, like your, your expenses went up with a twenty-four, but it was window replacement project, did you get subsidized for that?
Okay, so, so our operating subsidy, we get it according to, we receive so much per year and it's, it's according to the rent that's coming in. For example, if anyone else that might charge, let's say five hundred dollars for the, for the rent for an apartment, we might get two fifty coming in from the government to allow us to keep our rents where they're at. Otherwise, our rents would be just as high as anyone else in town. The, the subsidy that we receive, it allows us to hire our employees, pay our employees, pay our insurance, pay for any kind of upgrades that we have on the apartments. As far as the window project, you know, we've, we've saved, we save our money and we ended up saving enough money to, and, and bank off of capital funds and operating subsidy, which I think it was, there was, it was approximately about four hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars that we saved in order to buy, replace new windows for the east side of apartments. And we're hoping to save, continue saving some money to replace north side and then continue later on at the south side apartments.
Are you at a hundred percent capacity right now? Your apartments?
Yes, ma'am, we are. And when we have an apartment that's vacant, we might have, if it's a one, two, or three bedroom, we might have twenty, thirty applications that, that have been turned in and we, we go through the, the person that's next on, on the application. It's not like I can open it up to a family member of mine or anything like that, they have to be on the list, they have to be on, on. They see what our list looked like back in, two months ago, three months ago, four months ago. So there's no favoritism there. Yes, ma'am.
That was my next question answered about the waiting list, how long? I guess we know that there's a housing crisis here in Pecos.
Yes, ma'am.
So I was just curious as to how, how many families or persons were on the waiting list for a unit?
Well, we could have between 20 and 30 applications on the waiting list on a one, two, or three bedroom. Yes, ma'am. And it, it could go from six months to a year before your, your name comes up. And we might go through 10 applications before we find someone that is ready to move in because they might have the deposit, they might be locked in somewhere else or they're not ready to move in, but we, we, we go through the process of screening, vetting, and then get in our new tenant.
Who does the screening?
Well, the screening itself is, we, we, there's an application they fill out and they have to, we, we also do a credit check. We also do a check with, see what kind of records they have or anything like that, if they, they've been in trouble with the law or things. And we see what kind of monies they come in as far as their, if they have SSI or child support or just different ways of money coming into the apartment. But we have three, four employees that are qualified, certified to, to review the, the applications. Yes, sir.
How old are your units?
Pardon? I believe they were built in 1974. They've been remodeled, what they call remodeled, maybe 19, early 80s or so. But you know, the, our apartments are, were in great, great shape due to the, the employees that we have. We have employees that really care about taking care of their job, take care of the apartments. They might be out of date, however, the, the apartments look really nice. You wouldn't be able to tell if it was a 20-year stove or, or a one-year stove by looking at it when they first move in, other than it, it might be obsolete, but they look just as new when they move in. Yes, sir.
The laundry rooms, they're like all new, washer and dryer?
We, we have a, a laundry room at our north side apartments, however, in throughout our complexes, three-quarters of our apartments have hookups for washer and dryer. The only, we have a laundry mat that we have on the north side apartments and we also have a laundry mat that we have at the west of the Pecos Apartments complex. And our, if, if, if a washer or dryer needs to get replaced, we replace it immediately. Yes, ma'am.
I know the fencing looks nice over there.
Doesn't it? Yeah, we're really proud of the fencing there, there at the west of the Pecos Apartments. If, that's the one you're talking about on the north side, on the south side?
You're here.
Yes, ma'am. And it's, the project was approximately about $120,000. However, you know, something that, that we thought that we really needed is it was a security thing as well, however, you know, something that also looks nice, aesthetically looks really nice.
Then we'll go to item F6, Discuss Considerate Request from the Pecos Housing Authority to waive the 2024 payment in lieu of taxes. The pilot, Strategic Goal Six, Sound Governance and Fiscal Management. John Salsito, Pecos Housing Authority Director.
So, thank you for this. You know, I was asked by my board if we're, we're gonna ask or request this pilot again. You know, for numerous years, we had been getting it waived and I believe up to about four years ago, we, we, y'all gave us a, y'all asked for a 10%, maybe 25%, then the following year 50% to get paid, and then 75% and the full amount last year or the year before. However, our pilot has also increased, which I believe last year might've been 37,000 or 35,000 that we would have to pay, and this year it's 42,000. And I mean, those kind of funds, we could use it back into our complex. We wouldn't be able to replace windows immediately, but that's something that we would put our money back into. That's where we're dedicating those funds if, if we were to receive them or not have to come up with those funds. You know, that's, we really appreciate everything you've done for us. We, we thank you for that. You know, we can't do it without y'all. If, if, if that can be done, no worries. The Lord, the Lord has provided and He'll continue to provide.
I guess a question I have.
Yes, ma'am.
On this item is, you're asking for all the taxes to be waived.
Yes, ma'am.
But we can't speak for the other taxing entities. I mean, we, we don't have the authority to waive another taxing entity's taxes.
Understand. I know in the previous years, that's, that was being taken care of. After look at, looking at the, the, our, our paperwork, it, it, it actually shows that where each taxing entity has to waive those, that amount, the corporation, under the corporation agreement. Yes, ma'am, I, I'm aware of that. I believe that your share is like 8,300, 8,400 dollars.
Are you going to the other entities?
Not, not yet, sir.
Or is it, or you said you've been paying taxes. I don't see on your expenses here.
Tell me again.
I don't see the taxes on your expense. I'm back.
It's, 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 it's under the pilot.
Because before they were asking for the pilot, and now you're just asking to waive the pilot?
This is the only program that we have in Pecos that's.
For ours?
So that, that's low income, that, that helps out our disadvantaged families. Again, you know, this, this, these funds would really help us out. If not, again, let me just say, I was, as, as, I was asked by my board to always request and here I am, you know, requesting and I'm grateful for everything you've done for us in the past and if, if it can't be done, I understand.
I don't have a problem doing the pilot, but I'm not sure about waiving everything. And again, it's, each part has to go to each of the taxing entities.
Yes, ma'am.
They're not, they don't qualify for an abatement?
No, sir.
Go back there.
Yes, sir.
Make motion to do the power.
Well, only, yeah. Again, I'm not sure since this is listed with all of the taxing entities.
And what's her part?
And I think before too, the check was written to the city and then it was the city's responsibility to disperse the taxes out to the different entities and I'm not really sure why the city is being tasked with doing that.
Yes, ma'am.
Or is it you just writing the checks yourself to the different entities?
That's the way it was written in the corporation agreement, that the city would be, since we're under y'all's umbrella, that y'all would take care of it. If, if, but if you would like for us to request the, the other entities to waive the pilot, that'd be okay as well.
What can we do?
Let's see why you can waive the city's portion of the abatement.
That's the only authority I think we have. What did you say, John?
I think that is the only authority that we have.
Okay, let's go on.
So that's your motion to waive the city's portion? Do you have a second?
Yes, ma'am.
Which one now, a second? Okay. So I have a motion from Councilman Graham, a second from Councilwoman Torquillo to waive the city's portion of the pilot.
Yes, ma'am.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries.
Thank you so much. The, the pilot is a payment in lieu of taxes, the acronym for it. Thank you so much. Appreciate you very much.
I'm hearing from all my relatives and friends in Dallas I hadn't heard from in a long time.
Say it again.
I'm hearing from my relatives and friends in Dallas area I hadn't heard from in a long time.
You know, the, the, the great thing is, is that they know where Pecos is at.
Yeah.
And, 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 you know, anytime you start doing good things, it's, it's, it comes with a price, you know, and I'm, I'm ready, I'm ready to fight for it. All right. Thank you so much.
Item F8, Presentation of Pecos Economic Development Corporation 2024 Fourth Quarter Report, Goal One, Sustainable Economic Development. Jimmy Dutchover, PDC Executive Director.
Mayor, council, thank you for your time. It seemed like it's, was yesterday I was here, it wasn't, but it does seem like that. You have the goals in front of you that were set at the beginning of the year and what we've done to, to try and address each and every one of them as we're moving forward. I don't know if there's any that you wanted me to, to actually address before we got into the, the financials, but I wanted to highlight a few things if you don't mind. First of all, we are changing the website, which is gonna be a little bit more interactive. We were at the join-in to team meeting yesterday and we've changed from our, our platform with a group out of Lubbock to one with Al Paso that has already ties working with the Economic Development Corporation. Having said that, they will be in town the end of next week and possibly the following week to start to highlight the things that are taking place downtown with regards to the improvements that have been made and also the, the things that are going on with the Emergency Management District. You know, we, we hear so much about what's going on in Pecos, but believe it or not, the groups that are coming in that we're recruiting, they wanna know more about what's going on. And it's hard for them to toggle from one website to another website to another one, so we're gonna try and put everything together. In addition, we're also trying to procure all the, all the RFQs that are going out so that they're under one umbrella and that way we get more contractors that may wanna provide their services to us and at the same time give us better rates. Now, that doesn't mean that we're not gonna consider the locals because that is the first thing that we do is we call the local companies and say, we are putting out this, this request. Please do your best if you wanna come, I mean, if you wanna be considered, come by the office and we'll let you know exactly what the, the plans are from the Economic Development Corporation. I can't speak for the city, but Mr. Lino and I have multiple meetings throughout the weeks talking about the things that are going on because it's, it's changing so fast. One of the other highlights that I'll talk to you about is that we, with the help of the city, with the help of the other taxing entities, we are now going to complete the 12 homes on Jackson Street all at one time. In addition, they also have to acquire somewhere in the neighborhood of three to five or six acres to complete the other 18. They're also asking us to help them with the Texas Energy Fund to, to adopt another plant for Pecos that they can put on the same property. So all those things go to the vision, not only the Economic Development Corporation, but we couldn't do it without y'all's leadership and support, so thank you also very much for that. So many people think that these groups are just gonna pop up. The technologies that we're looking at to bring in, they're one of a kind, they're totally different and it's new to this area, but it's also gonna diversify the economy that we have, so. Anything else that I meant?
I'll make a comment.
Okay.
To the financials about something you just mentioned.
Okay.
On here, one of your items is about the lobbyists and that item being completed.
Yes, ma'am.
And just kinda wanted to make a comment that this is a joint effort between the county and the city and the PDC to help degrade the cost of the lobbyists.
That is exactly right. That is one of the key components.
Really important we each have paid.
That I hope the public understands. It is not just one entity. It took everyone who was sitting down together to come up with a group, come up with an individual that we thought could represent us and, and already had successes out in Austin and Washington DC, which I think y'all hit a home run. You know, sometimes the public may not see it, but believe it or not, we're seeing it and as well as the participation from the, from the governmental entities, whether they're state level or federal level. Mr. Lino talked about Mr., or Senator.
Blanco.
Blanco, coming down here because he hadn't had much representation. It's always in Fort Stockton, but because of this trip that y'all took and y'all invited him, he felt so, so honored that he said, I'll get there as quickly as I can, so I hope it, it's well attended.
Okay. We'll go on to item F9, Discuss Considerate Request for proposed changes to the PDC bylaws. Goal One, Sustainable Economic Development. Jimmy Dutchover.
Mayor, it's okay based upon the changes that we're still going through with the Economic Development Corporation. We're gonna wait until next fiscal year to bring them to you. We, not that we're overwhelmed with what we're doing, but at the same point, there's some things that I wanna make sure that if the other groups that are under the umbrella are, are doing something that we're not, we wanna make sure that we're cognizant of that and we try to mirror the chamber, advertisement and tourism, museum, as well as the housing authority. I think Mr. Salsito pointed that out, so if it's okay, we'll just, we'll just postpone that. Thank you, Paul.
Motion from Councilman Arona, a second from Councilwoman Seals to postpone the proposed changes to the bylaws, PDC bylaws to later date. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. Go to item F10, Discuss Consider Arriving an Amendment to the Fiscal Year 24, 25 PDC Budget, Goal Six, Sound Governance and Fiscal Management. Jimmy Dutchover.
Thank you again, Mayor. If you recall, this is the format that we used last year, except that we didn't have the middle column. We, all that we did was tell you what we had, what we were changing it to, based upon Mr. Graham's request, is to tell us where you stand after six months. So that's what the middle one is. The left-hand column is actually where we, what was approved at the beginning of the year to take effect October 1 and with a projection of what we would go through for the fiscal year. So apples to apples, oranges to oranges, the last column is what the board approved to be amended on Tuesday at our regular monthly meeting. As you can tell, there's a highlighted items where the changes have taken place. There's a little overestimating that we had done, not too bad with regards to revenue from oil and gas, whether it was pipelines or whatever. We're off a little bit, but we've made it up with some of the sales tax money, so that's been good for us as well as interest that we had projected, but you can see what's in the middle, the $166,000 of interest, although we projected 225,000. So you basically double the 166 and it should still be above that. As much as we do not like to work on a negative budget, if you will look on page three, and it's easier to work backwards than at the end and tell you what the story's gonna be, we had adopted a $406,000 negative budget. As you can see, we've made a profit. We anticipate making a little bit more with some land sales that are going up, some discussions that have taken place, and I think Mr. Lino will touch base behind closed doors, updating y'all. But we end up looking at a, at a change of about $8,000, $8,000 is what we'll end up doing. What we anticipate or what we wanna do and what is going to trigger part of that loss is that we put money aside to clean up a piece of land that we anticipate. loss is that we put money aside to clean up a piece of land that we anticipate selling before the end of the fiscal year. I was in contact with the group earlier today, who is the same group that is actually doing the Dollar Tree. They asked for the RFQs and the proposals that were submitted last year so that they can contact those individuals about cleaning up that tract of land so that they can start to do the design as to what they want to do, which is restaurants, a, some shopping in that area, and then hopefully a steakhouse is what they're, they're wanting to do. So again, it's the vision of what y'all have asked to look at, how are we going to be able to bring in some of these franchises, how are we going to be able to stop some of the traffic that goes on Interstate 20 and 285 and bring them in so that they spend their dollars here, and that's exactly what we're doing. Part of this, and we'll give Ms., Ms. Seals credit, or Councilwoman Seals, because she had told me, or she had alluded to the fact that a group that we had previously had taken credit for some things that were not theirs. You know, it belongs to you, it belongs to the Economic Development Corporation, the board, and to some extent even my predecessor. So we're trying to be as diligent as we can with our tax dollars and the sale of the properties that we have. But we are also going to take on four interns to help us out during the summer. This is the first time that we have actually looked at participating in scholarships for the high school students. And we challenged them to write us essays about economic development and small town or small rural communities. Some of them were excellent, I must admit. I was like, oh, I checked, they're not AI, you know, so they wrote it themselves. I did, I was like, okay, so somebody's doing it right. Now, what we also, what we thought about was, we have to, we're trying to look at filling the void of what the chamber and tourism have done. John's done an excellent job, but as working together, we think we can help out. We also want them to do some of the things out in the community that although they're going to be a paid intern, they need to know what it's like to go out in the community, not just work at, at one of the stores, get their check and that's it. We want to teach them some things so that hopefully we can mirror what y'all have done last year and the year before. I think it's two years that y'all have done the internship. I'd hear of not longer.
More or longer.
Well, I was only aware of the two. The rest.
Or maybe the third.
Okay, well, there you go. So my apologies, Mr. Joseph. Yeah. Yeah. And I reached, I reached out to Edward and he told me about one of them in particular. He said, that's your guru right there when it comes to social networking. So I was like, okay, here we go. But nonetheless, you know, we're going to anticipate putting in the work at, for a 10-week period, 40 hours a week, part of it here, part of it in Golden Grove, part of it selling tickets for the chamber, part of it sitting down and possibly working at the rodeo, working at the museum, things that we can do to help out and teach them what it's like, what service they're going to, they're going to need to bring. You know, each of you were one time young and like I was, and we got a chance to get our hands dirty. So I want to be able to do the same thing, and the board overwhelmingly supported it. I don't know if Mr. Lino has anything to add to that part of it.
No, and it's going to be different than our intern program. It's going to be more community-based than what we do here. Our teaching is the operations of the city. I think what they talked about, that board meeting is just getting the kids acclimated to doing stuff in the community and maybe getting them excited about it. We know how hard it is to get volunteers and stuff, and if you can get somebody excited, especially kids, you increase the chance of them maybe saying, hey, I can earn money doing this and have fun at the same time. So you get people like Parker to come back.
Thank you.
I never said anything.
And then one other thing that I'd like to highlight is, of course, Ms. Seals brought it up, Councilwoman Seals brought it up about, about the lobbyists and some of the expenses that we did not anticipate, the participation that we're having to put in Austin and Washington DC. So those are some of the changes that you see. They are not drastic changes by any means, but we also know that there's another piece of property that I, each of y'all have signed your NDA that hopefully Mr. Lino can share the latest and greatest update that we have going on.
You say setting up a website these days isn't an inexpensive project at all.
It is not. Media costs time and money and, you know, y'all at least have someone here full-time that does multiple tasks, not just one. But it is an expensive ordeal, but it's one that I think if we work together like we do with the two-point, the two-by-six and the joint entity groups, it'll go a long way. It's a good use of money to make sure that now not only the region knows about us, but the state of Texas knows about it and then as well as the country. Because remember, those groups that we brought in, two of them are not United States-based companies. And so y'all are to be applauded because we are diversifying left and right.
And I think that's an important point to make is to put out the accurate information and not the opinions and the hearsay and the misinterpretations of looking over something, but it's fact-based information that I think really gets us in trouble and it just stirs everything up. So fact-based information is our greatest asset and what we can do to help the community and get everybody on board. So that's an investment.
Well said. And one other, I think, if you don't mind, Mayor, we have a grant writer that, that writes for us and he is supposed to visit with the mayor quarterly. I think we set it that up so that he can get the views of what the council want. We know what Mr. Lino and I are doing, but ultimately y'all speak among yourselves, you know, in passing, and when you're able to break bread or something, please feel free to sit down and ask the mayor or share your thoughts with him. And if you want to be invited, let me know. We'll set up the workshop so we're in compliance with, with group meetings.
Is there a set date for his meetings?
We don't because his varies, just like it did today. I think we had a very, very good update as to what was going on with one of our projects, but it's, it's whenever we bring him in and we try and kill two birds with one stone is what we try and do. Because remember, he's not only writing grants for the Economic Development Corporation, he writes them for the county and then also for the city. But we use our dollars before we even turn to the city and put any burden on y'all. So that way you can provide more services and, and use that funding that y'all need to for the residents.
And that's what I like about what we do now is this, you know, everybody's working together. Everybody's working the same, helping each other on the dollar side of things, you know. If we can do it by using the E D C and not using the calendar or the city's money, that's what we're doing, you know, and that's what's helping this town grow. Again, as I said, the web-based, if we can get one website that encompasses every single entity in the city instead of, I hate it when I make a call, press one for this, press two, you hit it and then it starts.
Just next to you.
Yes, or it starts all over again.
And then now if you hit, click here and it's, oh, that page no longer exists or whatever, that's so frustrating.
And like Ms. Councilwoman Torquillo said, you know, I mean, if you have a course that's one page, one page to go to, you cannot sometimes just page to go. You know, you get your information, you act your information, and it kind of coils the innuendos and the rumors going around it. And you're always going to have those, but at least to have a place to go.
Correct.
And check, yeah.
But keep in mind that even though some of these companies come in, they provide a service, we turn to the locals first. If they cannot do it, that's when we have to go outside until we can create that workforce here in Pecos.
Hopefully someone else comes up and decides to move this construction.
Hopefully. But you know, we got Parker back, maybe that little guru that I told you about social media, she'll come back there, so, after going to college.
And that's a good one. Am I looking at your correct?
It's draft day, right?
Anything else? Mayor, I'd like to make a motion we approve. I think this is the year for the fiscal year 24, 25, Pecos Economic Development Corporation. Is that a question? I guess I have heard of, of the, the one on Jackson Street.
Correct.
Okay, is, you've got a virus for those lots or just speculation?
No, sir. What, what occurred was the, the group that came in that is converting natural gas to electricity, one of the conditions for the assistance from us was that they had to find, they had to build 30 homes that had an average square footage of 2,000. And in that particular subdivision, there are rules and regulations that they have to do 2,000 or more. So it was easy for us to possibly look at selling it one at a time. We were like, we're going to hold on until we can find the right group that can do it all at one time. So the board gave me the authority, we did a number, we did a study with the help of some individuals in our community that had the expertise, and so we should complete the, the signing of that property by the 30th of this month. That's the goal. And I know it's at Rand's office already, so we're there.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So we have a motion from Councilwoman, Councilman Arona, a second from Councilwoman Seals to approve item F 10 as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. Thank you, Jimmy.
Thank you all very much. Y'all enjoy your day.
We'll go on to item F 11, update on the code enforcement department, goal five, promote open and consistent communication. Holly Girock, Director of Community Services.
Mayor, Council, Holly Girock, Community Services Director. I appreciate everyone's patience on waiting for this report. I'd like to preface it with identifying that we have had some changes in our department last year. We brought in, we lost some officers and we brought in officer, two officers in training. One actually is a license code enforcement officer in November and one is officer in training. And we've recently brought in a third officer in training at the end of January. With that said, I have been working very diligently with them, identifying the community needs and how they should approach it and what the community's expectations are in holding our, bringing our community into compliance. That is the, actually, that is the goal, is to educate our public and identify what they need to do to take care of their individual properties, whether it be business or residential. And as you see, the numbers, they're actually very good considering it's only for first quarter, which is January, February and March. We had a total of 585 cases opened, quite a few illegal dumping cases, which continue to grow weekly. We are working closely with our landfill supervisor who is notifying us whenever the, the drivers are out in the field and they find these different areas that we need to go out and investigate. We do investigate them. So far, we've been doing really well with the exception of the tires. Can't really identify where tires come from, but the other areas that we are able to investigate is the construction materials and car materials that are being placed into the, the black dumpsters as well as our larger dumpsters. So we are having quite a bit of success in holding our community accountable when we are investigating. Our solid waste, solid waste is 23, the solid waste is actually everything outside of your unsanitary nuisance is your weeds and grass. These are the other area, these are the other items that are left in the properties. It could be any range of debris. It could be building materials, old, you know, anything that is, that is not functioning and just creating a eyesore. Working without a permit, we're also incorporating that along with our code enforcement officers, and we have identified 19 of those over the past three months, letting them know they need to come in and comply with the permit process. Weeds and rubbish, as it states, weeds and rubbish, which is your overgrown weeds in either your residential or vacant residential lots and/or commercial. Junk motor vehicles, we are working on identifying more of those. We currently have three that we have actually processed. There's a little bit more to it when it comes to processing junk motor vehicles, and we have a, although I am license code officer, we have one code officer who is able to actually sign off on it. They are required by the state to notify the owner or the person that's registered by certified mail and signed up as a code enforcement officer. I am letting that person work with our two officers in training to make sure that we are following the law. When we go to remove that sucker, if it's there after the 11th day, I said, make the call. We're not, you know, they've been given proper notice, due process, but I think it's a long time coming. We have some out there that's been out there for a while, so quite a few still.
What if you can't find the address for the owner?
If we can't find another.
Find that address for the owner, what?
So what we do is when we see a junk motor vehicle, vehicle on the right of way that's been abandoned, et cetera, we work with the VIN number. We have specific software that we're able to utilize specifically just for that. We can only locate in Texas, New Mexico, and so we'll run that VIN number. It's going to provide us with the registration information, color of the vehicle, et cetera. We do not use the tag itself because they're interchangeable. So in identifying the VIN number and printing out, it's a good, it could be anywhere from five to 10 pages, but it does identify the owner. And it also speaks to the guy that wants to work on everybody's vehicle that's sitting out in the, a street, you know, for an extended period of time. We've, we've had that where they've called us and say, hey, that guy says supposed to be working on my car, you know, but you can clearly see the tires are flat, there's, you know, all kinds of debris around the tires, around the vehicle itself. So that's between him and the guy that he's made arrangements with. In most cases, they will, you know, make sure they come get their vehicle and, and get it out of the way.
The question Rand is asking, I guess, from Councilwoman Seals is, they can't find an owner, you know, who's abandoned to the process, what do you, is there a link, is there a timeframe where, if we're banned, like, we can't find the owner, identifiable owner, but he was.
In cases like that, we're going to have it removed off of our right of way. You cannot, you just can't abandon a vehicle.
What about vehicles that are sitting in someone's yard and they've been there forever?
Right. So vehicles that are sitting in yards, we do, we're, you know, we're trying to prioritize, to be honest with you. The vehicles sitting in the, in people's yards can be in the yard so long as they're tarp'd. So.
Slow mo.
They're.
Yes. I don't want to speak, I'm not going to speak out of term, but yes, yes. You know, we're attacking in what, in my opinion, all of it, all of it is important. Don't get me wrong, it is. But I've asked them to prioritize this because there's quite a few in the right of ways that have been left in the road, and it's a process. But yes. The RVs, illegal connections, these are RVs that usually have water lines connected to them. You can have your electricity connected to an RV in your property, it has to be on the proper surface, but water lines are not allowed to be connected to an RV that is parked on your property. Commercial vehicles.
Proper parking, is that in the grass or is that on a concrete slab or is it?
On the approved surface, so long as the tires are on a stone surface, it could be a bag of stones, so long as they are not on the actual ground, that is an actual, that is a, an approved application for RVs.
So when they're on Yucca and Eddie, was there for a while and it was gone. The guy was gone. I'm not a problem.
Commercial vehicles on unapproved surfaces, that is primarily in your, your commercial areas. If you look down 285, we've noticed owners are complying and posting large posts in these properties to keep the 18-millars from coming into these unapproved. They don't want to spend the dollars, you know, to create a parking surface, or they have other plans for it. In the interim, they have, have placed pipe in these areas to keep vehicles from coming into that property. We've had over 280 follow-ups, 41 complaints, walks, walk-ins and call-ins, and 23 health inspections of the 137 restaurants that we have. We have also implemented a thank you card programs for, we have quite a bit of compliance, and I've asked them to give me some more specific information on who, how many we actually have received that are actually in compliance. But we're implementing a thank you card to these citizens in our community because we do appreciate them paying attention to the door notice and helping. we do appreciate them paying attention to the door notice and helping us, help them understand what, what the goal is. And the goal is obviously, is to beautify our community, one home and one business at a time.
What about hazardous, uh, trucks, you know, that carry hazmat material or something? Um, I have a few complaints about that. And when it winds the right direction, they can smell the odor that they get out, which could be, could be dangerous.
So, um, well, you know, whoever is, my, my understanding, I'm not a expert on it, my understanding when it comes to hazardous materials, um, they have to follow a certain route and they can't be in certain areas.
Parked at a house.
No, yeah. I would just ask you to let me know where that's at. Um, 'cause clearly they're not allowed to, they're not allowed to do that.
Do they have the haz- the sign?
The hazmat, the different, uh, symbols? Yes, sir.
Yeah, please. Eighteen-wheelers aren't allowed in city streets anyway. I mean, we've got particular streets that they're allowed.
Yes, so we, they're not allowed to, that's correct. So, eighteen-wheelers are not allowed to park in residential, unapproved surfaces in commercial, and, um, they're only allowed to come into the city if they're, you know, obviously providing a service to the different commercial areas on Eddie Street, et cetera. We've, um, placed street signs out showing the paths, which, which route to take if they're coming. For instance, uh, they're coming out of an area, Lincoln has it, um, shooting off to two eighty-five, or the arrow is to two eighty-five. We've updated with permission a text out on Third Street to just have the arrow pointing straight west, um, instead of where it originally was showing Eddie Street. Unfortunately, you know, we still, I see, I see the eighteen-wheelers out there on Second Street, which they're not allowed, um, uh, that, you know, falls under our traffic, um, falls under the, the police department's traffic control. And, uh, it, there are less, but it's still, they're still there. Yes.
Could we possibly in the future, I'm looking at this three-month period, uh, disposition of citations, you know, for the outcome?
Yes, um, so regarding this, uh, the notice of violations, you know, uh, what I've impressed on staff is I want them to do their absolute best to build that rapport, educate, you know? We speak code, most of our community doesn't. Um, and so, first educate. Obviously, you know, if that is not working, we actually, so I, we just currently wrote, uh, a notice of violation, uh, Tuesday, right? Um, we're gonna give people an opportunity to address what they need to address, but if, if, uh, they fail to take advantage of our generosity, kindness, education, et cetera, yeah, then we're going to, uh, give the notice of violation. So, we're not giving them unlimited time. This is, you know, you've got a ten-day notice on your weeds, you know, clearly if there's something going on, share it with us. Let us work with you, let us help you, right? We, um, have code talk once a month and we provide a list. We don't stand by the list, it's just a list that they're welcome to, uh, contact this list of, uh, different people that provide services. Uh, we can't guarantee that, but we provide it because the people have said, hey, I do this. And so, we give that to them, and it's up to them if they want to reach out and ask for assistance in cutting grass, removing garbage, et cetera. Uh, but the notice of violation, yeah, I'm sure we'll be adding that to our, uh, report, our next report, which is, I believe it's June?
June.
Yeah. We'll be doing this every quarter, um, unless you need it to, you wanna see it more often. Um, ideally, I have my staff give me their final report at the, uh, the first week of the last month, uh, their work. It gives them time to put it together and get it to me so I can then compile the numbers. There are gonna be some other things added to this as we grow in our coverage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go to item F-twelve, discuss, consider approving the renewal of the professional services contract with Tommy Gonzalez for staff training and continued strategic plan implementation. Charles Lino, City Manager.
Mayor Council, Charles Lino, City Manager. Uh, we're bringing this back, and this is a, not only a renewal, but an extension and an amendment to the original contract. The original contract that was approved last year was for twelve months. Uh, we have the scope of work that was in the original contract. We have met those criteria by getting our strategic plan done, having our goal teams work. Uh, the work continues with, uh, Mr. Gonzalez as we speak. He still meets regularly with some of our staff. Uh, this new agreement, which is a month a month, so it's for twelve months, but it can be canceled at any time by other party, uh, is to attack a few other items that kind of just expand on what our current, uh, strategic plan is and helping implement some of those goals. A lot of it is being implemented by staff through the trainings. This is to give them a little bit finer, or kinda sharpen them a little bit and allow them to understand some of the processes. Uh, we haven't been sophisticated historically really in pushing these things. Uh, I would anticipate, uh, with the items that are in here, that this will be for one more year, max. And then we should be self-sufficient and be able to take everything on our own. Uh, I've had that conversation with, with, with Tommy, and he understands that it's not a, something that goes on in perpetuity and stuff like that. So, I think that, uh, it's not cheap, but I think we've got a good value for what we did. If you look at the strategic plan and look at some of the presentations that were done, you probably have seen significant growth in the staff. I know I have. Uh, and the exciting piece is I haven't had to be involved a whole lot, so it makes it nice just to review. Uh, but, uh, I, I would request you all approving this, that, at least for this one more year, uh, with the caveat being that if it, if it becomes to where we're not getting a value for it, that we can cancel it.
And I know from the first time, the staff talked about it, that they've gained a lot of knowledge and confidence in what they're doing. And that brings a better balance to the city, to the citizens, to, again, grow our own, you know, hopefully pushing people from the bottom up to take over as if some of us older people retire.
Yes, sir.
And go away quietly.
I remember last year, I was really hesitant in voting to approve it. I was like, oh, is it worth it? I don't know, it's worth it, totally worth it. I've seen the growth in city staff, um, all around, so I think, um, Mr. Gonzalez has done a good job at engaging, teaching, reassuring, being that support, um, person. So, I, I think it's excellent. Another year would probably be.
That's why everybody has a path.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am. And, and it's a, it's a, a written path, and we're seeing through the presentations that are happening, you all will get semi-annual updates, but the updates are happening more regularly than that within, internally, uh, with the leads and stuff. And I think it's had some of our staff step up, and it's been nice to see that.
Um, may I make a motion that we approve the renewal of the professional services contract with Tommy Gonzalez for staff training and continued strategic plan implementation?
Second.
I have a motion from Councilwoman Trillo, a second from Councilwoman Graham, to approve the renewal of a professional services contract with Tommy Gonzalez. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. Go on to item F-thirteen, discuss amending the chapter three eighty tax abatement agreement with Hector Pena, HP Construction, as approved at the October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four Record City Council meeting. Strategic goal six, sound government and physical management, Charles Lino.
Mayor Council, Charles Lino, I'm gonna ask if you all would kindly postpone this until May eighth meeting. Hector was hoping to have his architect come into town to present with him and do that, and that was not an option this time. Uh, I had let him know that it would happen on the eighth, though.
I have a motion. Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Arona, a second from Councilwoman Trillo, to postpone item thirteen to our May eighth meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I meant to ask, I thought we had everything settled.
He does. He just didn't have his architect that was able to come present, Randy, and he wanted to show you all that. That was the issue, the only issue.
I'm not paying you much to three eighty.
Well, that's up to council. He's asking for an amendment. He wants to, he wants to ask you all for, uh, either a hundred percent abatement or an extension of the amount, of the five years that you all gave him. Uh, I mean, anybody that has one, you're more than welcome to come present that to council. It's your option. Uh, it's up to council to determine whether or not you wanna extend it or leave it intact.
So, we kinda set the guidelines and he accepted it, and about five years, it graduated down.
Yes, sir.
I was coming back again.
Yes, sir.
Did you take more taxpayer money?
We do have executive session?
We do, we'll let him.
Well, we will now go into executive session after Government Code, section five five one point oh seven one, consultation with attorney, five five one point oh seven two real estate, five five one point oh seven four personnel issues, and five five one point oh eight seven economic development. And it is seven o'clock PM.[1292.98]